Is eight O two, eight two three, zero one one six. Extension one one one. And then executive session for leave or tip property. Can I have a motion please?
How much should you accept the agenda as read?
Jamie?
Yeah, I seconded it.
You guys say I.
I oh, I.
Mike?
I.
Bob?
I.
I for me. Okay, so approval of the minutes for four sixteen twenty. Motion please?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second it.
Any discussion? No discussion anybody? Uh Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Bob?
I.
Me, I. Payroll. Let me get my bifocals here, sorry people. Um, ending in four nineteen. For seven thousand eighty-two dollars and two cents. Payroll ending. Five one twenty for seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Payroll ending five eight. For eight thousand four twenty-two fifty-six. Payroll ending five fifteen twenty for seven thousand five twenty-six eighty-seven. Accounts payable. Um, for twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. Um, some of the big ones on that is the septic service for one thousand nine hundred and twenty. MVP health plan for seven thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty cents. Accounts payable. For five one twenty and the amount of eleven thousand two hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. And um. The big one in that was a tax payment for two thousand seven hundred. Accounts payable ending five two twenty for four thousand sixty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. That was for Green Mountain Power and Huzick River Hydro. And another one ending on five eight twenty for thirteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. And some of that was um. J landscaping company for nineteen seventy. William Barney con- construction for three zero five two fifty and the IRS. Alright, and then last one. For five fifteen twenty is for forty thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Um. Hunter's ex- expect, I can't even say that. Exactly, thank you, for thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. That was a big one on that one, so can I have a motion please?
Don't move.
Second.
Uh second.
Okay, uh Jamie?
I. I I have a, I have a question on the warranty.
Oh yes, sure, sorry.
That's okay. Would it be possible to um every, before every meeting to get them in this? Format like we did email towards this was perfect, I I really um. I like have, so we could look over a little bit before.
Right, is that okay Linda, is that something we can do? Yeah, what we just did, like how how we emailed it before the meeting?
Right, right, even even when we go back to where we can sit in the same room and. We could have them beforehand, it it just, I like it a lot better.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, sure.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. So I did Jamie, okay Mike, you?
Um, yes, I.
I, okay, Bob?
I.
Me, I. Thank you everybody. Alright, number four, old business, Green Mountain Race Track property follow-up. So who would like to go first?
Um, I I guess I'll start, um, uh just to let everybody know that and this is what the executive session will be about, so the details will come out there. But I wanna let everybody know that uh, you know, I um, I was able to talk to Steve Soler, who's the manager of the LLC that runs the Fremount uh. That runs the Fremount track. And then I was able to also talk about uh, talk to some people who have some input. This is the part that has to be somewhat uh, uh somewhat confidential. About uh uh the the event that's coming up there, or or the event that's being advertised for there. And I um, and just to make sure that I'm not saying anything out of line, it would put us in legal liability, I prefer to talk about it in in uh, in executive session.
Okay. Mike, what did you find out?
You guys, you guys all got a copy of email um from the VLCT that I received, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, so basically um our hands are sort of tied. Um, from what I gathered from the VLCT email. At this time, we have to take some more steps um. To actually do anything with the opening itself and the property. I think with the debris on the property, we we can probably with the with the construction debris. It's an A and R thing, Jamie, is that? Would you agree with that?
Possibly, um, I've been told that TAM has records that that uh material was tested. And doesn't have any hazards in it. But it was supposed to be crushed and then removed. And I guess, I think we talk to TAM and talk, ask them when they're gonna remove it.
Right, and I, I have been unable to find a permit, I'm not saying that there is not one. Have been unable to find a permit for that stuff on that property.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Sure.
If they had a permit to do it, would they have a copy of it, TAM that did the crushing?
Uh, I would assume they should have a copy of it, so someone should have a copy of these, I, I've just been unable to locate one. In in the town office. Um, and I'm not saying it's not there, I I've just been unable to locate it. I've also gone through um minutes um. Expensively, past minutes of select board meetings now. It, it's been a skim thing, I, you know, I didn't read everything word for word. Unable to find it there as well. That I'm not saying it's not there, I just haven't been able to locate it.
Right. I was just wondering if you could ask. The seller now, if they have anything on file.
Right.
Material. Okay, anybody else have anything? I know that the um fire and rescue said that they would need six to eight weeks. So went the um. Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, right, to set up everything properly for such a big event. Um. I don't know how the board feels, but I know that everybody around us is canceling everything. Because of the COVID nineteen, I don't see. How we can have such a huge event in panel at this time. I don't know.
Well, I guess it's the uh, just uh just the the facts, because I'll have more to share uh. But but just the facts would be that I I don't even think that we have a uh. There's not a a completely filled out large gathering ordinance either. Nor the fee paid for it, so.
That's correct.
So right now, as far as we know, this isn't. This is between the Green Mountain LLC uh and uh and the promoter. It's a, it's a private conversation that the town is not really engaged in. Other than a a draft copy of a large gathering ordinance that is not complete, which I think means we don't have it, we don't have one.
Right.
And right now, the governor's order isn't gonna um allow it at this time anyways.
No. Okay. Anything else on rebound right now?
Mike, do you wanna reach out to TAM or you want me to give them a call and ask if they have copies of the permits and um. The environmental studies of uh what that material is?
Uh, it doesn't matter, I mean, if you've already reached out to him, you know, maybe you can continue, uh you know, I don't wanna step in if you've already started, so. You know, that's fine with me Jamie.
No problem.
Yeah, uh you know, if you've started, continue and then you you're gonna know who to contact right off the bat, you know, rather than me start from scratch.
Alrighty.
Perfect.
Alright, moving on to TV discussion, did everybody get the emails?
Yes.
We had a numerous emails from everybody. That were taken under advisement. Does everybody else have anything to say on this?
Um, the the only, uh and I asked to have this placed on the agenda. Um, uh I asked to have this placed on the agenda, and and the only thing I wanted to say was that we're taking it back up. Um, uh it'll be a little different, um, I I. Not started entirely from scratch, but uh but sort of. Um, I'm starting with the VLCT's model policy, it just so everybody knows. It is not download the policy and then and then slap your name on it. There is a a lot of customizing that goes into policy to make it specific to your town, so um, I it just. Yeah, at least partially answers one of the emails that we got. Is that it's not, there would, no one ever considered this a one size fits all. Um, and that's just, it that's just, uh that that was never considered that way. Um, uh the model policy is there so that you can uh reference the appropriate statutes and have the appropriate language. And then it gives you some direction as to where to, where to customize and how to customize. And that's what I'm going through the process of doing now, and actually uh uh collaborating a little with Mike on it too. So uh um uh. We we're not ready to put something before the, before the town yet, but we just wanna let everybody know that we're working on it.
I think you could reach out to Joel Howard as well, because he stopped in and talked to Linda, gave her. What he thought, so you could contact Joel.
Okay, and and just to be uh clear, I think uh Mike uh Mike did talk to him and so did. And I've also talked to some of the uh, some of the individuals with concerns, and I intend to reach out more to some of the people with concerns.
Right, I would just like to say that there's two sides to it. You all need to act like adults and try to respect one another until we can figure this out. I don't wanna hear. People are taking pictures or videos or sparing on both sides. Act like adults please, we're all in this town together. Thank you. Alright, moving on.
I I have, I have something on the same day.
Okay, sure, sorry Mike.
That's okay, one thing. We all, we all been sitting in the same room either, it's pretty hard to know when somebody wants to say something, I get it. Um. One, one thing that I wanna make cr- cr- crystal clear is on social media. Um, you know, there's been some posts that the roads have been open. And there's a, I think there's a pretty major misunderstanding, they have not. Is still illegal to operate on the roads that. The proposed roads in the proposed ordinance. There are very few roads and I'm probably gonna miss some that are open. Uh crossroad is is available, um. County road is available, part of old military is available. Um, for legal use right now. Um.
Or Hidden Valley also.
I don't think Hidden Valley's on there Jamie. I don't know, it it could be, and I, but I'm not, I don't think it is. Because there's nowhere for them to go, because they can't travel lad. Or Nile School Road.
That's what I'm seeing, upper, the upper part of Lad Road.
I don't think it is. But you know, I mean, there's, there are, there are definitely. It's at some point, but I know there, there was that social media post. Where those roads, there there just, there's very few roads that are actually legally open right now.
And that's the uh. And I'm sorry, uh Bob, if I could chime in, just uh, just uh, a- and I did see that post also. Um, he he was corrected almost immediately, um, so hopefully everybody saw the correction as well. I mean, he put that out there and then uh, and then almost immediately people commented with no, it's not, no, it's not, no, it's not. Um, that's a proposed ordinance that uh that uh never went to a vote. So hopefully everybody understands that and hopefully they're hearing us now and know that that's not a uh, the, that ordinance never came to a vote. And at this point, we're uh, uh we're looking at the, at 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 revamping that a little bit. I think one of, some of the feedback we got last year is the select board should have taken more control over the ordinance. And that's exactly what we're doing. We have, we, but as far as ordinances go, we have in the past. Taken ordinances from other towns and solicited feedback without even taking the other town's name off. It's saying we're, we're considering this or that ordinance, in fact, that's how we did the large gathering. So I I don't, I don't necessarily agree if there was anything wrong with the way we did it last year, but taking the feedback, we're gonna do it differently this year.
Yes.
The other key point is if people don't reach out to us personally. Whether email or by phone. I know I don't read everything that's on social media from for forum and Facebook and all other things. So people can't be taken and put, thinking they're putting that stuff out there. And it's actually getting digested by us.
That's a good point.
The other thing, um. I see some people are, in the emails that we did receive, they talk about. High uh ATV traffic on some of the roads that shouldn't be. In those cases, th- those people should be notifying law enforcement. And if there's a cluster of people calling law enforcement, then that's. Where they're gonna know to take and go checkout areas when they're down here patrolling.
I I think that has taken place, I'm I'm, I know it has actually Jamie with my conversations with. Don't know about state police, but I know my conversations with Joel. That has um, that particular thing has taken place.
Yeah.
They, but they uh, I think uh, if I could chime in on Jamie's point, Jamie's point, I I I believe is more to the effect of. Uh, we're not the right people to complain about. Illegal activity should really go through law enforcement, not.
Exactly. We can't enforce it.
Yeah, right.
And as far as information gathering, it should come to us, not be put out on Facebook expecting us to see it.
Right.
Or another forum out there.
Exactly. Any more discussion on this?
I'm done.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. Um, I received an email from Shannon McLennifin, she's resigning from the Economic Development Committee. I'd like to accept with regret. Thank you so much Shannon. We now need to fill the post. Any discussion?
We need to take and put it on the website um that we have an opening. And if somebody, you know, people that are interested, they can take in, write in what they do for the rest of the committees.
And if I remember right, it's another opening, don't we already have an opening too, don't we? Or maybe not, maybe we fill that. Well anyway, it'll be on the website to say uh how many openings we have, we'll have to add one more at this point.
Okay, um. Do I have to have a vote on that Linda? No, okay, thank you. Um, next we have to adopt the local emergency operation plan, the LEDOP, did everybody get it and read it?
Yes, uh yes.
I got, well, I got a couple of things, Ian Jackson.
Okay.
Um, they should be fairly quick, though.
Alright.
Page one. Um, kinda in the middle of the page where it says two other local points of contact, who should have authoritative local information are listed at the right. It looks like they only have two anyway, these tool total. The way I read it, it should be three. Two other than the Emergency Management Directive. So I think they're short one person.
Or could go on another page, it lists all the fire chiefs?
Well, but in order, I. I guess what I'm saying Jamie is I don't think this is accurate, because we don't have a point of contact. Third point of contact person.
Our highway director, uh, I thought Joel was.
It's not listed. There's no name listed as third point of person.
The chairperson?
Put that in.
For the town, it needs to be the chairperson.
No, it's not, it's, this is on page one.
This one? Municipal leader, is that what you're on, Mike? I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's the local emergency management plan must be adopted anyway after town meeting day. municipality, Pono Vermont, which is kinda on the right-hand side. Uh LEMP adoption date thirtieth of April twenty. NIM's adoption date thirtieth of April, EMP name Craig Odell. EMD, his name. Uh, his email, POC number two, name Steve McKay, EMC. His phone number, his, there's no POC three name on here. In, in Vermont, man, emergency management needs to contact municipal leaders to determine status and the support requirements during an emergency. Emergency management director and two other local points of contact. Which should have authoritative local information are listed at right, and there's only one person listed besides Craig.
So it'd be me on the bottom for the third person.
I.
You, near you. Then the second person is Steve McKay.
Like Steve's the emergency management coordinator, Craig is the emergency management director. There's no third person, if if neither one of those two were available, there's there, there should.
It's me or you honey, cause if you look left, it says that it's municipal leader, so that's either me or you.
On, on, there's page here, it doesn't say that.
Can you see my page? See right here on the left? It's right here.
Where is it?
So it said municipal leader, so that would be the chair or the vice chair.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I don't care who it is, I'm just saying there's nothing there.
Okay, so you want a name there, is that what you're saying?
It should be filled in.
Okay.
That's all, I don't care. I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody or say there should be somebody.
No, no, I agree. Okay, so we're gonna put my name and then your name second, okay?
That's fine with me.
Alright, anything else?
Uh, yeah, under, on page four, under vulnerable populations. Um, Green Mountain Mobile Home Park, there is not a phone number or contact info for Brian Mallard. I think that's probably fairly important.
Okay, Linda says she doesn't have one.
I think I can get that for you Linda.
Okay.
I I know I can, as a matter of fact.
And I already pulled them to change the names for the elementary school in Oak Hill, because those people have changed, because the other two retired.
Well, and that, okay, I, I thought that, you would have known that.
Right, so it's Kevin Davis for the elementary school and it's Beth Trayvon for Oak Hill.
Okay, so that brings me to the regional shelter page.
Which is what page, huh?
Five, page five.
Okay.
Um. Under the school. Primary local shelter. Capacity fifty. I don't understand why the capacity is fifty, there may be a reason for it. But I would think that that school would shelter more than fifty people.
There's a reason.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Do we know what the reason is?
It may be because if it's.
Something to do with Red Cross.
Yeah, but it may be because if the school is actually in session. And they can only take on fifty more individuals, counting the uh students.
Yeah, I don't know Jamie, I, it just, it was a question that I, you know, just a question I had. And I cannot nail capacity for uh Pono Valley Fire Department Center Station. Uh, and. So. Um. It's another question I had. There's questions, I'm sorry, you know, I highlighted them, um. And then the school district office, there's no phone number there that.
Office, you should know that off the top of your head, Mike.
I I do. I can give that to whoever needs it.
Okay.
Um. So, um, eh, and then there's Lisa, the the primary number. For. Number one is the school number itself?
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah, I knew, I knew that, I just didn't know. We have another number there, just. I just wanna make sure this is all correct, that's all.
Okay.
And do we also have? After the, wh- which we probably do. The um school has changed. No longer is the town building. Do we have authorization through the SVSU elementary district district? To use the school, or do we even need it to use the school as a shelter?
We don't need it, as far as I understand from being on the school board, because the building. Is the fallout center for panel, just like the other school in Woodford is the fallout center for Woodford.
Right, and I, that's what I assumed, I just wanted to make sure and have it on, you know.
Right, we can call up there and maybe get it in writing, but as far as I know from being on the school board, there was no problem there whatsoever.
Well, I didn't think so, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, uh you know, like I said, I just wanna make sure. I need to make sure the uh.
I believe that's in the language um when the school took over the building.
Yes, it is, actually.
Here when we um, had signed all that.
Yep.
So the phone number for this uh SVSU.
Okay, I'll write it down.
Four four seven.
Yep.
Seven five zero one.
Seven five zero one?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Can I entertain a motion with all the corrections to accept?
I make a motion.
Second it.
Any more discussion? Bob?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Mike?
I.
Me, I. Thank you very much, moving on to. We need to adopt the local, oh, there we did that one. Appoint Pono Vermont Communication Union District to the CUD, is there anybody on the board that would be interested in that? If not, we had a letter from. A Caitlin Rando Barnes, she's very interested in doing it. I can read, did anybody else get her letter, or was I the only one that got her letter?
No, I sent that also.
Did everybody read it? So is there any?
I make a motion, we appoint Caitlin Randall to that committee. As our representative.
Alright. Any discussion?
I just think that um. She's in an it, in an area that is lacking. And so therefore she'll have um. Uh, harmful intention to take in uh with the eh, best interest for the town. For the rural. That have uh. Issues with the situation there on the internet.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jamie?
I.
Bob?
I.
Mike?
I.
Me, I, thank you very much, y'all have it. Um. Property taken by the town of panel on March two thousand nineteen tax sale. Did everybody read it and know what we're talking about?
Yes.
So, does anybody have? Well. How would we like to move forward with this, does anybody have an idea?
I have one individual that has reached out with interest to purchase that from the town. Um, and he sent the email out also. Um, there was this uh family um homestead at one time. And I had asked, I sent a email out to um. Linda and asked about getting all the costs associated with it. Um. And the, the process of it. But I sent that out this afternoon, so I doubt she's had time to take and collectively put that together.
Right, so if we decide to put that out to bid for people to bid on, we have to make sure that we get all our money back. For the overall cost. Plus the clo- closing costs, plus the sewer usage.
I don't think, can, can we legally put up to bid to make a profit, I don't think we could do that.
I don't believe so.
Right.
We can make a profit, but we have to cover up.
So, so could we, could we make a motion at this time? So, so could we, could we make a motion at this time, because we have had a person reach out to us? Make a motion to sell that piece of property to this interested party, covering all costs. The sewer, just just covering all of our costs and then we don't have to worry about evicting anybody.
That's correct.
That becomes that party's problem and and then it's a done deal, we're, our hands are washed and we get our money and and. I believe that's what they're interested in doing.
And then it goes back on the tax roll.
Right, exactly.
And I would second that motion if that's what that is.
So can I entertain a motion if that's what you wanna do?
I'll make that motion, absolutely.
Any more discussion? Does Bob have anything to add?
Uh, I don't, I think that's uh, we don't have very good options here, that that looks like the best one.
All right.
Yeah, then we're done with it.
Right, exactly. So, um, Mike?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Me, aye. Thank you on that, so that can be forward. Linda, is there a way for you to um put together what our cost is? For now, and then like pick up with a closing date and stuff and then we can do it right to that date. Yep, so that's what Linda's gonna do, okay?
Thank you, Linda.
All right, so then we go to public comments. Any public comments from anybody or telephone calls from anybody?
Um, so I I think we gotta pause here a little bit, we gotta give them some time to call, cause they'll call that number and it'll forward and and then they'll pick it up.
Okay, so if anybody out there has a question, they can call now, please. The number is. Eight oh two, eight two three, zero, one, one, six, extension, one, one, one.
I have one comment. Which is, it's not that big a deal, um, I think. I'm not even sure who should have done it, but I'm gonna take responsibility as a board member. After we did the appointments um um for all of the various committees and commissioners. People, whether they were appointed or not, the best my knowledge, no one was notified. And I'm not even sure whose job that would have been, would it have been the boards or I, they weren't notified if they were successful or not. Right, but, right, but no one, you know, no one reached out to anybody. That's all, and I'm not sure if somebody should have, I mean, I think somebody probably should have, and whether it should have been the board or whoever, I don't know.
The board secretary does it, reaches out to the planning? In the DRV?
You know, I'm gonna take responsibility for that this time, you know, as a board member, because we probably should have said, hey, this is what needs to be done.
Right, and I also asked Linda to send out letters from the board thanking the people that were on the board before that didn't make it again.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that was done back April.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that, I just know that successful people didn't know that they were, had been appointed, I do that for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't think anybody's actually had a meeting or anything. I, they do realize. Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, we are on Zoom, they can use it correctly? So they can use it and set up their meetings through Zoom, through window.
Right, no, I don't, I don't think anyone has.
Or the board secretary.
Right, has has had a meeting, I just, I know a a couple of people that, they were on committees now, even though they had sent in an application.
Right, so they can get together, decide, talk to the board secretary. And set up a meeting on Zoom if they would like. Hopefully in a couple more weeks, we'll be able to meet in person.
It's kinda nice, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would be.
And I just wanna go on record in saying I miss everybody.
Thank you. We miss everybody too, it's tough. I mean, I'm a little lenient because I'm out with the public and I get to go to work for five or six hours a day, so I'm not as bad as some people, but it's pretty tough. No phone calls?
Uh, no, um, should we have somebody just call that number and make sure that it's forwarding correctly?
Sure. We're having somebody do it right now.
All right, I just wanna make sure that uh that anybody who wants to comment is is able to.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, it might take a little bit more time today because it's a new process for us.
It hasn't been ringing in the office, has it, Angie?
Nope.
Well, it wouldn't ring in the office because it's set to forward.
What, okay, I would think it's still chime in there before it forward at all.
Depend on the system, I guess some do, some don't.
In the future, if people could forward the questions ahead of time, that would help as well.
Uh, here we.
Oh, here we go. I'm meeting.
This is probably you, um, hello, this is Bob. It works, okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and hang up. All right, so uh it is working, so if anybody is dialing the number, it would have come through here.
Give it another minute?
Uh, sure.
And then we could go into executive session for the legal. For the property?
Yep, I think that's right.
One thing I think we still need to do is um. Actually figure out assigned designated areas for ATV riding. I mean, we have the town land, but we don't have any access point to that yet. It's crosser from pantry, and then um we have some trails up off in County Road. It was asked um to have them mapped out or have the areas mapped out and I don't think we. Were uh, we haven't reached that point where we had gotten it done. I know.
There are no legal trails on County Road.
There's no legal.
Other than County Road itself.
If I could uh, if I could chime in a little bit there, it's um uh just one, one thing to remember is. Uh Vasa, uh I think we're we're getting that out of sequence, this is something made clear as we get into it. Vasa doesn't come in many work to do trails unless you have an ordinance. So uh I think we uh, and we probably got that wrong last year, is the uh uh, that needs to be made clear. It's not, it's not about, it's not about uh you have no Vasa trails, therefore you, no roads are open. It's about having an ordinance so that Vasa will come in and give you trails, uh 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 one comes before the other. And I think uh um. Uh, it 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 and also I would say that Vasa is different than than just legal riding. Um, those aren't the only places that are legal.
The other portion of that would be if there's landowners that are willing to open their property up to a set trail system. Um, that kinda stuff I feel should be on that map also.
I would agree with that, Jamie.
Cause otherwise, I mean, if you were to, just hypothetically, I'm not saying to open every road up in the town, but. If you opened every road up to the town and there's no place off the road to go, then what's the purpose of that?
Yeah, and we're getting deeper into the discussion than I think we had on the agenda. Oh, maybe not, we did have it on the agenda earlier.
We were waiting just for a minute to go by, but I just have a quick, one little thing, I forgot to say that during public comments that I had. Um, somebody contacted me and asked me to do an update on the town office, and as far as I understand, there is no update, is that correct, Jamie?
Yeah, we're still in the permitting process, um, uh, I think. Think just the other day, they're gonna do the um. Well test and drainage test for the A and R permit, that had to be completed. And that was, once I get that data together, then we can take and send that upstate. Um, and collectively send it up onto um for the fire marshals and the whole nine yards, so.
Okay.
Well, test was already done, Jamie, no?
Yeah, that's why I say it was just on this week or this past.
They're actually digging today out here.
Who did the well test?
The well test as far as the water, um, that was done, but as as far as testing, you know, for chloro and all that kinda, you know, any. Um, stuff that so the water wouldn't be safe. But today was a flow test, I guess it's, I should rephrase that, um, to see how many gallons a minute. So it would meet the um requirement for a public facility and also discharge for our um. Our stormwater permit, so they combined, they 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 combined both of them at the same time. So they knew, they knew a calculated amount that they were discharging from the well. And how fast it was um dissipating naturally through the ground.
Okay, so, so we've had those tests done, were they done, were they done by a licensed plumber, do you know, Vermont licensed plumber?
I believe so. They were done, they were done under the uh licensed engineer. Is what it required.
I was just curious because we didn't see a bill, I don't think, no, I don't believe there's ever been a bill for. A licensed plumber to come in and do any water test quality or anything, correct? Not that I'm aware of, anyway.
I don't know if he did bill us. Be honest with you.
I I think being a municipal building has to done by a Vermont licensed plumber, we're not. I believe it does.
Okay, anything else? Our time is up, you do you wanna go into executive session, please, have a motion? So Bob, did you make the motion?
I did.
All right, Mike, did you second?
I did.
Okay, um, I say all in favor, I say yes, Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike? Okay, we're going to into executive session. We have to wait a few.
I think that means we all stay on and then you just drop catamount.
Exactly, yeah, we have to wait for them to get out.
Well, you can write.